Hello?
Hey, we're gonna get started in just two minutes here, so bear with us. Thank you.
Okay. You can hear us fine?
Yes, we can.
All right, great.
Hello, Brian Barrett here.
Hey, Brian, how's it going?
Hello, Brian, this is Rod.
Rod, hello. Robert?
Yes.
Hello.
Hi.
Good evening, it is seven oh one PM. I'm gonna call this meeting to order. This is the regular meeting of the Smithfield Township Board of Supervisors. Please join me for the pledge of allegiance.
It's America, which stands, one nation, God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Stand with me just for a few moments here. Uh, there was a tragedy that occurred in Uvalde, Texas, uh, yesterday. It's slain nineteen children and two teachers. I think it's important that we recognize their lives. I think that it is incumbent upon all elected officials in this country to do something about gun violence, particularly in schools, where the only country in the world where this routinely happens. I also think we must recognize the second anniversary today of the slaying of George Floyd. His life contributed immensely to social growth in this country. That we must acknowledge that all are created equal, that black lives matter, and that we have to work together to find common ground in our communities. So, I thank you all.
Amen.
Thank you. Members present include Vice Chair Robert Lovenheim, Supervisor Brian Barrett via Zoom, myself, Chairman Jacob Pride here, Office Manager Julia Heilica, our Engineer John Tressler of Level Engineering, and Ron Karasak, our Solicitor. We also have, uh, present with us Chris and Devin Witty. They are guests for today, talking about Eagle Scout projects. So, I'm gonna allow them to go first due to, uh, time constraints. Devin, whenever you're ready.
Great, all right, thank you. I'm Chris Witty, thank you for your time. We're actually at a scout event tonight, so, uh, time is of the essence. But, uh, my son Devin will take it from here. He sent you a abbreviated presentation that discusses changes, uh, for his Eagle projects being contemplated for Waterfront Park. Um, this has already been reviewed and approved by Cam Huffman, uh, head of the East Rager Little League, which is the organization that's meant to benefit. Um, it's also been reviewed by Mike Green, who's part of ESLL as well as, uh, a leader here at his troop, uh, BSA Troop eighty-three. Um, so, uh, I'll turn it over to Devin. If you want him to skip through parts of the presentation, I mean, the main parts are those that relate to things that may require a township approval. So, uh, you, uh, you can ask him whatever questions you like.
Sure. Devin, if you wanna give it the general overview. Okay, um, uh, this is my ideal project. Um, this is for my Eagle Scout project. Um, I'm in Troop eighty-three. Uh, there are some problems with, like, the dugouts and I, the fields and, uh, what to do with the, uh, how to paint it and, uh, the store logo and stuff. Um, I know you saw a lot of, uh, pictures here of the store and the dugouts. Uh, on, uh, slide seven, you could see, um, where to, where are we gonna put the trees? And, uh, a sign at, uh, slide eight. Um, if you have any questions, uh, tell me now. Thank you.
I'd like to thank you for co-posing this. It's very important to me. My brothers went up to the league. I mean, we were all at the same banquet, which was cool, uh, the other day for the high school team. So, I appreciate the work that you put into this. I don't have any questions. I think it's a very commendable thing, and, uh, it was reviewed by Ken Wolf, uh, as a courtesy to us, our zoning officer. And, uh, you know, I would think that the township, because it's going to benefit users of the park and the community, I think we should sponsor up to two hundred and fifty dollars. Robert, Brian, do you have any comments or questions?
Good idea.
No problem. Okay, great. Uh, that said, uh, we'll make the motion when we get, uh, to the later part of our meeting. But, Chris and Devin, thank you very much for joining us. And we will shoot you, uh, an email that formally lays out what we agreed to. But, thank you very much again.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, uh, Smithfield Township.
Thank you. All right. Have a good rest of your week. Take care. Bye-bye.
Thank you very much. Excellent. So, uh, just a couple of announcements for, uh, the beginning of our meeting. Want to remind the public of the zoning map change hearing, which will be June eighth at four o'clock PM. Our regular meeting will follow at six o'clock PM that evening. Uh, which is also a reminder that all meetings for the Board of Supervisors in, uh, June and beyond will be at six PM. And I also want to announce an executive session with Tom Heimbach in relation, in regard to personnel relations from nine oh four AM to nine ten AM on, uh, what's the date? Sorry, someone's calling me. I do not recall it off the top of my head, but it was last, it was, uh, May sixteenth. So, it's just six minutes. So, that's that. Next, uh, is our, uh, set of minutes from the May eleventh, twenty twenty-two meeting. Have you gentlemen had the chance to review it?
Yes, I have.
And I have.
Mr. Lovenheim, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second, my Mr. Barrett. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
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 We do not have any public hearings this evening, nor do we have any plans to act on. Uh, so therefore, we will move on to reports. Uh, first, we have our solicitor's report, and we have at least two items specifically to address in regards to the auditors matter and correspondence from the Department of Environmental Protection. So, Ron, please proceed.
Mister Chair, the auditors matter is still pending, if you will. Uh, Ms. Osgood has not yet been served with the paperwork, according to the sheriff's office. Uh, the sheriff's return, uh, says that due to a pending lawsuit, deputy, and it's not this lawsuit, another lawsuit, our deputy was unable to complete service as a result of no trespassing signs. It is recommended by the sheriff's solicitor that the plaintiff, which is a township, file petitions and obtain an order for alternate service on the court. Uh, that is the return that was made with respect to Ms. Osgood. The other two individuals were served. After we had a meeting on May thirteen, uh, she had asked that I send her a copy of the complaint. And I also sent her an acceptance of service form, which she could sign and return, and then that would obviate the sheriff of having to serve her, and we'd have service. Uh, it is now eight twenty-five, so it's not, like, a billion days ago. But, I still don't have anything from her noting acceptance of service. Now, you know, I guess I'm gonna have to end up, uh, filing some petition with the court and spending more township money with respect to get her served unless she's willing to, again, sign that form.
I think we can, we can get her to sign the form. Um, I'm a little missed that the sheriff could not serve it. I've been to her house. There's no, no trespassing signs, any different than anyone else's.
Yeah, I, I understand that, and she had said in an email to me that the sheriff was sitting outside her house in, in, is it her car or, never came in. Trying to figure out what they were doing. But, in any event, if we get service on her, that would be.
You'd get a refund.
That, that would be, we did get a refund of twenty-three dollars, I think, or something.
Wow.
Uh, we, yeah. I paid a hundred and fifty for service, and we got a refund of twenty-three dollars and fifty cents.
A dollar to get a meal or so.
So, in any event, uh, and then yesterday, by coincidence, I spoke with an attorney by the name of Benjamin Storm from the Fitzpatrick, Lentz, and Bubba Law Firm, and we discussed the matter. Because it deals with litigation, I would prefer not to, uh, advise the board of that discussion in an open meeting. I'd prefer to do it in an executive session if you want to do that.
All right.
And it doesn't have to happen now, but happen another day, 'cause we still don't have service. But, I did speak with an attorney who purports to have contacted me on behalf of the Board of Auditors. And I'm not quite sure how that even happens, because I thought that not only was the attorney selection not yet approved by the board, but I didn't know that the fee was approved by the board. So, I'm not sure.
Well, we certainly haven't, and they haven't had a meeting by any means that we are, uh, you know.
Well, then, I'm not sure how he's contacting us, other than to simply say that, you know, I've been contacted by the board and maybe to put out some trial balloons, taking temperature, whatever you wanna say in that regard. But, uh, I, I was not, I, I assumed that he was contacting us that the board had agreed to hire this firm and had agreed to pay their fees. For board, meaning Board of Supervisors.
Well, we, we certainly haven't, and, and if they did, they didn't have a legal meeting under the purview of the Pennsylvania township, no.
Well, they, they could do whatever they wanna do, but, well, I'm not sure how this fellow's gonna get paid, and who is the supervisor's having to do it?
Because I, I don't think Ms. Osgood has been involved in this at all, and has had no conversations about this with the other two.
According to the information I received, Rose Davis has contacted this firm.
So, is it?
Or, no, I'm sorry, it was the letter from Fitzpatrick, Lentz, and Bubba dated May ten was sent to Audrey McMillian, Hocken Secretary. Now, I could've just said that the Secretary, not that it'd be contacted. Uh, but, uh, again, I know there's an issue with fees, because it was saying that our charges are one fifty to four hundred an hour for attorneys, one fifteen to one seventy for paralegals. Advisor Lovenheim said we really should not pay more than what we pay solicitor to have this person hired. So, again, I thought that with him contacting me, there had been some follow-up contact, but apparently not.
Well, we can discuss that in the executive session later on, or, or another day.
Correct.
Okay. All right. How about DEP?
DEP, I showed Supervisor Lovenheim when I came in, this is the Germano file, okay? There are the other files I have, okay? This is the Germano file, okay? When I say Germano, the sewage permit, uh, file.
Right.
I spoke with Mister or Judge Germano today, said, "What happened with your complaint? You filed a complaint in April two thousand and twenty-one."
Right.
With this, and he said, "I haven't heard anything from that." I said, "Well, then, am I authorized to contact this, this attorney and say, 'Rely upon the complaint of, uh, Judge Germano until such time as there's a decision on that, and there's nothing else we have to add, four words to that effect, and maybe like that.'" Now, whether that's gonna make her happy or not, I don't know. All I know is that I thought this had died, a quiet death, and apparently that's not the case.
Well, at issue, they're, they're, they're saying that your letter wasn't responsive, and I, I think that, I think that's absolutely outrageous, the letters.
The letter I sent to them had all of this information.
Right. And that's nearly all the exhibits, 'cause Judge Germano in his own complaint had even more.
Judge Germano's complaint is even bigger.
Yeah.
Okay, so, I don't know what else they're looking for.
And I remember you specifically referenced, uh, the proceedings in regard to him when you made your reply to DEP, so I'm not sure why they're, uh.
I don't know either, and sometimes.
Taking a fishing expedition.
You know, sometimes when you deal with people who are not high up on the ladder, and that's not, it's not meant to be some left-handed comment or whatever, but sometimes the sergeants are worse than the generals. So, uh, to just deal with it, I guess, and, uh, and I will respond to her. But, that's what I'm prepared to respond unless the, uh, unless the board believes I should add something or do something else, et cetera. I know, again, Supervisor Lovenheim, uh, very clear that he believes this is a waste of time and money, but unfortunately, we don't have a choice.
Oh, I, I would certainly agree, although I don't know if there's anything we can specifically do about it, but I, I think your response that you just outlined is a perfect fit for this scenario.
And, and I will copy the supervisor's, of course, so you know what I have to say. Okay, so we get some goofy response back, at least you know what I've said.
Well, the only thing I can think of is to put a time limit on this, the response that we get to our, uh, inquiries for this person, and if we don't get an answer, to contact the head of the DEP directly and say, "This is what's going on. Um, we, we need some, some further assistance to clear up this matter with the department."
Uh, I agree, and, and I was thinking of just copying them with this letter, but, you know, maybe I don't, I don't do that in the first instance.
I agree.
I don't go over the person's set, let them try to respond and solve this, and then we go.
Let's presume there's some good faith here.
We'll give them, this will, will be a chance to respond, and then.
The last time I've heard from her was back in May or April, no, May of last year. She said that she'd been on maternity leave, so she's just getting back to this, so.
Sure.
Not quite sure how long maternity leave is these days, but it is what it is, so.
Ron, just to clarify, uh, what is the date of Judge Germano's complaint to DEP?
According to, plus this to them, uh, on April twenty-eight, twenty twenty-one. Now, I have a receipt stamped from our office, township office, on April thirty, but I'm using April twenty-eighth as the date that he sent it.
Wonderful, thank you.
And other than that, that's all I have on my, and other than I've advertised the amendment for zoning on, uh, the eighth at four, and I need to thank our illustrious chair, 'cause I was in time warp yesterday, and I thought yesterday was the twenty-fifth, and I would've come up last night at seven o'clock, had he not called me, because of whatever reason, I was in time warp, and today, I was saying twenty-sixth, and I said, "I have the planning commission at five," and there's, "No, it's not, that's tomorrow."
Yeah.
So, I, I have to sort of get in sync here a little bit, but he saved me a trip last night.
No, no worries. I appreciate, uh, the kind words, "Save, save your time," although, you know, spoken as, you know, we're always welcome for, for visitors.
Uh, and just to piggyback on what Ron said, I spoke to the zoning officer today. He did post those properties for the map change amendment today as well. So, we are.
So, good, you gotta be a week ahead, so we're, we're fine with that.
Excellent.
I have nothing else unless supervisors have any questions.
Anybody have any? You're not? John, you've had a fun couple of weeks with all the submissions that we've been getting. Any, uh, anything to add for your report, or anything that you might admit?
Not really. We're just going through those submissions, uh, preparing the letters, and, uh, we're, we're, I think we've finished up the survey for the wellness park trails that, that did occur, so we're getting ready to get that into design, so.
Great.
We're just moving ahead with what you're trying to.
That's just for the question, this person, he asked you for it, you were preparing for admissions and, um, status and following it through. How's it going? Where, where are we in that form you showed me? Or, uh, planning commission? Give it to the Department of Government, or?
Robert, I think you're speaking about the ten permit form.
Yeah, yeah, the permit form.
Oh, that has, that had nothing to do with the planning commission. Uh, that form, both forms that you saw, there were two forms that were created. The first one was designed. The first one was designed to create, uh, to track complaints that were coming into the township. So, um, it was easier for a zoning officer to track anything regarding to how long before he needed to follow up on something, uh, zoning carrying board action, anything taken before the MDJ's office, anything like that. The second thing was permits as they were being processed, so if somebody came in, when an application was considered complete, when it had been sent to the, uh, building inspector, when it came back, when it, uh, got to the zoning officer, when it was issued, when the fees were paid, um, none of those forms had anything to do with land development or the planning commission, that was solely zoning.
The reason I mentioned the planning commission is only to, Jacob and I have taken some cues from people on the planning commission. Why, there's some form here that tells us what's going on with everything here.
Maybe they should read the MP's.
That's the reason I mentioned that. But how, where, where are we in it? You know, start putting out additions of it every week or something?
Um, so, Missy, actually, that's forward, and I forwarded that to everyone, so everyone knew where we were, because we do have a lot going on. Um, and there is a lot going on right now, um,
Yeah, I definitely know.
The Eagle Valley, and, and I'll forward this to you again, so it's on the top of everybody's to-do list. Right now, Eagle Valley self-storage is on the schedule for tomorrow. Within self-storage is on the schedule for the June ninth planning commission. Franklin Hill is on the June ninth planning commission, Black Buffalo, June ninth planning commission. Uh, the AJ's draft condition of use has just been withdrawn as of today, so that's off our docket. Uh, the Eagle Valley was originally on the June twenty-second meeting, but has since been moved up to June ninth, so the conditional new supplemental review as well as the land development move congruently. Uh, and the Shawnee Valley PRD will also be on the June ninth planning commission. So. Yes.
I thought there was gonna be some form, but.
Um, uh, eventually, I would love for there to be, uh, but I want to get Ken settled in all of his zoning before we tackle the, uh,
Fair enough.
Saldow aspect of that.
Only a question.
Yep.
Probably gonna start at everything.
Did I get all of that right, John?
You did. I'm just dreading the June ninth planning.
You, you are going to have your hands full, and then the Board is going to have their hands full with, uh, scheduling all of those hearings afterwards.
We'll bring in Ben.
Are you kidding me? I hear that's gonna be the most exciting municipal meeting of all time. Like, everyone ought to be there for that. Alright. That said, we can move on to new business. Um, among, uh, our few things, I'm discussing ordinance updates. This relates to an email that Julia sent us a couple of weeks back, asking for what the priorities were for the next few ordinances after the adoption of the economic development zone update, which is now.
So, that's correct. Um, so in front of the Board, later down the agenda is the fence ordinance, which we're hoping to potentially put the final touches on tonight and get that moving towards its completion. Um, after that, I've spoken to Ken, and his highest priority at this time is to take a look at and revamp the chicken ordinance. Uh, but currently at this time, we have a, uh, big old pile of things that the Board would like to work on. Um, so we've got, obviously, the fence ordinance, which is the highest priority right now, and then the chicken ordinance, if you would like it next. Um, you've also discussed a noise ordinance, a nuisance ordinance, a sign ordinance, a false or illegal advertising ordinance, uh, responsible contractor ordinance as well. Uh, at this point, um, I wanted to come before the Board and ask for what direction you were looking for, uh, because of the desire of the zoning officer to go after the chicken ordinance next. I'm hoping I can pursue that next, uh, but really wanted to get it turning in your heads where we were going. Uh, I know the Board has, is planning to meet at five o'clock tomorrow with the planning commission to discuss signs, so perhaps that's the next thing. But I asked for this to be on the meeting, so all three of you could discuss this, make sure we're on the same page, so I can focus my efforts on ordinance creation in the order that you want it, uh, so we can focus me where you want me to be and get these done, and moving a little bit faster than that.
Well, you know, we, we bit off a lot, but we got it done. I, I mean, I would say for myself, I, I would think it could walk and chew gum. Um, the walking, I think, is going to be, uh, yeah, signage, I think that's kind of, I think there's like three efforts. There's, there's signage, and I think we should work on the nuisance and sand ordinance next, but I think the chicken ordinance, issues with that are, I don't wanna say small, but it's going to be a, a smaller update than the fence ordinance, which we're talking about today. I think it might make sense to get the fence one done as soon as possible, begin work on the chicken ordinance, and then, you know, while that's ongoing, as, as a collective, uh, you know, nebulous effort right now, uh, with, uh, the, the signage ordinance, I think that's the extent that we should think of at the moment, I think reasonably.
Uh, I don't, okay, I'd like to add to this, that nuisance coming up.
That's what I mean. I think that it, I, I think we can do nuisance, uh, we can do the fence and chicken, nuisance and work on signage.
Uh, Jacob, Jacob Bryan, uh, what brought up the, uh, chicken ordinance, uh, actual revision, isn't it?
Yeah.
A result of a complaint, or, that's usually the way it happens, I'm not sure. My phone's starting to break up again, so bear with me.
Don't worry.
Um, I, I, I have pieces, uh, Brian. This is something that, um, Ken actually brought up to me, I, I think it was back in twenty twenty, honestly. Um, I no longer recall exactly what he didn't like about the ordinance, um, but the way that it's worded right now, um, there is an issue with it that he's got, um, and it's got something to do with, I think, the number of birds, maybe, it, it's a little too fuzzy in my memory. I need to sit down and meet with him and talk to him about how he would like to see the ordinance fixed. Um, but I didn't want to do that deep dive until I had the opportunity to speak with the Board and see if he wanted me to even pursue that.
Okay. I do remember too, that Julia, that, uh, distance maybe was a factor also. Uh, your chickens had to be.
What's a factor?
Uh, distance. Uh, we have a lot of smaller, uh, plots of land in the township, point two-five, point five acres. How do you accommodate somebody who wants to own a chicken, um, on point two-five acres versus someone who has five acres and wants to own a chicken?
Right.
I, I no longer can remember if our chicken ordinance discusses coop management and responsible animal care. Um, but, but these are all things that Ken and I will delve into if, if the Board in fact determines this is something you want us to look into.
Forgive me if, if, if you're gonna repeat something after I said this, because I was out for a second. Um, isn't one of the issues that, uh, some of the acreage requirements for certain species are wildly different than another, of a similar size? There, I had an understanding that there was, you know, something that if you had, you know, text number on five acres, it was, you know, hugely different than something on like three or two?
Uh, Ken would be a better answer for that. I, I have not, uh, taken the time to revisit this, and um, I looked at it originally, probably back in twenty twenty at this point.
Sure.
Um, because I didn't want to take the time to do the research until the Board had decided you want to even bother looking into this.
That's fair.
Um, but I can absolutely get this information, uh, figure out why Ken wants this changed and get back to the Board if that would help me to make your decision.
I remember this is something that came up in early twenty twenty, and then around the time you got here, it came up again, but.
There's, there's another, uh, small housekeeping detail we should take care of when we're doing this, which Ken and I discussed, which is it's the wrong place. Now under kennels, for some reason. Figure out a place where you can actually find it.
That's true. You know, under chapter twenty-seven and a normal. That, that makes sense.
Brian, did that help answer your question at least a little?
It does. It, uh, going back, as you said, to twenty twenty, uh, there, there were a lot, it's, it's, it's a care of chickens, is what it is. And, uh, yeah, it's gonna take some time to put that together. But thank you. Yep.
Perfect. So I think we've got. That's on that.
Okay. So just to cover my bases and make sure that we're all on the same page, uh, fence ordinance, which we'll discuss later tonight, chickens and signage
Yeah.
will run pretty much concurrently, and then nuisance after signage is done, or kind of run the three concurrently?
I think we can run the three of them concurrently.
Okay.
Although I think we're going to get the fence and chicken ordinances done much quicker.
Yes. Signage will absolutely be a, a long haul, as probably nuisance will as well. Um,
Yeah.
So we can, we can buckle in for that one.
Fair.
Yep.
Also, um, I can note that I did turn in a, a whole sheet of, um, either inconsistencies or some small needs for change in, uh, chapter twenty-seven, which we should address at some time. Um, again, it's, it's like housekeeping of where things are, whether things are inconsistent. Or, for instance, we've got one, one district called the PUD, I think. There's only one, and it seems like if you read it, it's basically the ED zone. Why do we have, you know, things like that? But I think we should get into it at some point. Clear up. So that's yet another ordinance.
Fair enough. Okay. Next is the consideration of the engagement letter for corporate and associates. They are essentially just restating what their obligations are to us in this kind of transition between the hi, uh, the elimination of one position and the hiring of the budget finance manager. Their rates are remaining the same, just the frequency, uh, maybe increased because of the, the work that has to be done, you know, cutting some of the checks and uh, preparing the quarterly reports, uh, primarily on their own as opposed to.
Some of it.
Anyone have any questions?
Just for my note, Mr. Chair, the, wha- what are they doing again? Did you just remind us?
Oh, so it's, it's entering the, the bank transactions, cutting checks.
Accounting stuff.
Records, yeah, sure, that's fair.
That's all I need for my, my notes, so that if I go back to it, I remember that.
Yeah, don't worry.
Thank you.
Yeah. Ted, do I hear a motion to approve the engagement letter for corporate and associates?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Levenham, do I hear a second? Second by myself. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Uh, next is the consideration of resolution number five hundred four, the disposition of records. This is in keeping with uh, PIMIC, which is the Pennsylvania, oh, Julia, I can't find the acronym. It was, it's essentially that we follow the municipal, uh, records manual approved in December of two thousand eight, and it authorizes the disposition of old records, um, uh, permissible by law. Uh, an assortment would include write-to-know files before two thousand nineteen, accounts payable before two thousand twelve, uh, park use records for twenty eighteen and earlier, applications for employment not hired filed before twenty nineteen. So, that's what that's for. Anybody have any questions on that?
Take a motion to approve, resolution five oh four, dispossess records.
I'll take that motion.
Second by Mr. Barrett. Any questions?
Hmm.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Uh, next, uh, the next two on items deal with a township secretary position. Brian, uh, had initially indicated he wanted to step down, but I don't know if anything's changed. We, uh, he asked for that to be tabled at last meeting, and so now it's on the agenda for this one. Brian, did you have any updates for us in that regard?
Well, actually, yeah, I did. After a couple of visits to doctors, I, I think that I'd like to remain as secretary. The, I, the prognosis seems to be very good for me, and, uh, hopefully, uh, it'll get to the point where I can, uh, fully, fully, uh, step in and, 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 uh, do that position, as I have done for years. So I am saying that I would like to remain.
Okay, fair enough. That said, I move that we, uh, strike items D, E and F from the agenda. Do you hear a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Levenham, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Next, we're discussing the fence ordinance.
Wait, 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 I can't type that fast. I'm sorry.
That's okay. I was just gonna introduce it before you. Do you know? D, D, or D, E and F.
Okay, I've caught up, thank you.
No, it's okay, sorry. I was gonna introduce it to give you time, but, um, I understand that this, uh, draft ordinance, uh, incorporates updates that were, you know, submitted by all of us during the last couple of meetings. Julia, if you wanna tell us what the new changes are.
Sure. Uh, so, the fence ordinance in front of you, uh, addresses concerns, um, the only concerns that I received were from Robert, um, who suggested three things. Uh, the first one was, he suggested that we didn't need a permitting process. Um, I spoke to our zoning officer and so that we can make sure that our zoning officer and our department as a whole stays afloat. If we're sending somebody out to check on these things, we need to make sure that we're taking in some amount of money uh, to cover the cost of our zoning officer going out the vehicle and, and everything, just like we do any other permit. Uh, so we would like to keep that in back. Um, we took a look at the provisions for the electric, electrically charged fences portion of it. Um, and if you look at that spot, it does say, um, there is a portion for livestock. It's, there's also a portion for controlling the preservation of real personal property. So Ken didn't think we'd have any issues with keeping the apiary safe or anybody that did anything like that. Um, the last thing that Robert brought up were circumstances regarding frontage fences of more than three feet being allowed. And within the ordinance, um, after reading it again, it was, my bad, a little bit poorly organized, that it, it made it look like they weren't allowed to be over three feet in the frontage. Um, so we rewrote portions of it, um, and in short, it is allowed to be over three feet. It just can't be over three feet if it's within the front yard setback. Uh, and the reason that that is the way it is is to prevent any sightlines from being destroyed from people who are on road frontage, to prevent cars from smacking into one another because they can't see other cars as they're trying to turn out on the road. Um, so once you get behind your front yard setback, you can have your fence up to that six feet. Uh, but if you want it in front, it just needs to be lower for safety reasons. Um, so that was all of, those were all of the issues that we saw that we addressed and have changed in this ordinance that we sent to the Board on the nineteenth. Um, if you have any further questions, um, would, please feel free to let us know. Um, at this point, um, I don't believe, Ron has really had adequate time to review it.
Sure.
Um, so if the Board is comfortable, what we could do now is, uh, give, the Board would give the okay to send it to the planning commission and Ron for comment. Uh, so Ron would have a whole nother month to take a look at it. Um, come June twenty-second, we would address any comments from the planning commission, uh, as well as Ron. If there are any changes, we could make those changes, send it back, and, and, and do the whole advertising thing. If there were no changes at that time, then we could go out for advertising and get this passed. Um, Ron also will need to review the common property, uh, line and wall flash fence agreement that we've come up with the draft as well.
I still object to the permit, um, both because I think it's, um, intrusive and this personal rights to do what you want on your own property, and also charging people for, uh, approving is something that just seems like nickel and diming, um, the voters continually, and uh, we have enough permits here, and I don't like most of them, but, uh, I'm, I'm objecting to that. I, I would settle for having a permit, but not a permit that people have to pay for to put a fence on their own property.
I mean, I, I love you, Robert, and I, I agree that, you know, property rights are great, but not losing money on enforcing zoning ordinances is also great.
If they don't have a permit process, then you will have a problem.
Well, you know, we can go back to nineteen sixty-eight, but I don't think it would be good for any of us.
Well, that's where I stand.
Uh, that's fair. Ron, do you have any thoughts?
Uh, I kind of, I kind of agree with Robert, uh, Jacob. Uh, it's Uh, I kind of, I kind of agree with Robert, uh, Jacob. Uh, it seems like it's just a, a bit, uh, a bit much, really, for the, uh, people involved. So, I guess I, I would, uh, are we gonna vote on this matter now?
Now, no, the idea is that we would vote to send it to the planning commissions for review.
Well, I'll vote that we do that, then. Let's lay it on them. (laughing).
Right. Well, do I hear a motion, then, to send the property agreement and the draft ordinance for the fence, uh, for fences to the planning commission?
Yes, I'll make that motion.
My Mr. Barrett, all second. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
May.
Okay. Motion carries two, one. Next is the discussion of the township manager ordinance and contract.
Before we get there, Mr. Chair, just give me a moment here, just so I know, and maybe I did not get it out of my emails correctly, because I try to keep on top of those. The last email I have here is April eleventh with the ordinance. So, is there another one that has come down since then?
Uh, yes, Thursday, May nineteenth at ten forty eight A M.
Okay.
Um, the subject is agenda item dash fence ordinance discussion.
Okay. Cause I had read the other one, and looked at it, and I thought it wasn't too bad, quite frankly.
Oh, well, well, thank you. It's been improved since then.
Well, because you, you've addressed the issues that are always a problem that I see, putting the fence on the, on the line, boundary line. You can't do that, because we gotta be able to fix it, and then you gotta go on the other person's property to fix it, resolve that. That common agreement. I didn't read the common agreement, buddy and I read the orders. Same thing with putting it back off of the, uh, the front setback, whatever. That's important, because you get have people putting these things up, and then you're driving, you gotta go like this to see cars and stuff, so.
Right.
Get, did a nice job with it.
Well, thank you.
So, all right, so May nineteenth, that came down?
Uh, yes, May nineteenth, um, ten forty eight A M.
Okay.
I will, uh, reforward it to you, so it's at the top of your email.
Yeah, you don't have to do that, you got enough to do. I can easily.
It, it, it's up, it's already gone.
It's already gone, okay.
Now, she can forward it again, but I don't think that would cancel it out.
Okay, so that's good. So, thank you, Mr. Chair, that's, I just needed to know that. Thank you.
No, no worries. Next is, uh, discussion on township manager ordinance and contract. Uh, a new version was emailed, uh, to Lois. Uh, I think the version in front of us today is, uh, essentially the same. The only difference is, on the one that, that I had sent out to Lois, um, there's a couple of items here that are duplicated, uh, and that was my fault. So, when I fixed them, they were sent, but I don't think that version's before you. The only difference, uh, is that it delineates the duties a little more clearly when it comes to, uh, delegating authority to, to the we- the rest of the workforce and making recommendations on, on policy. But, at our last meeting, we gave authorization for advertised for, uh, uh, in time for our June eighth meeting. Am I correct with that date?
Are you asking me?
Yeah, I think that's what, oh, I can have the minutes right here, I can.
I, I, I believe so, and if I remember correctly, that was Ron asked for that to be clarified at the bottom. Um.
Yeah, I, I have my notes here about what I thought was.
Yeah, um.
Some comments with respect to the duties and powers of the township manager and.
Ron Karasak confirms that the township manager ordinance will be workedshopped at the May twenty fifth meeting with consideration for adoption on June eighth at six P M.
I, I'm sorry, Julia, would you, uh, run that by me again, please?
Sure. Uh, let me bring it up one more time.
There's gonna be a, a workshop on, uh, sorry.
My bad. Uh, Ron Karasak confirms that the township manager ordinance will be workedshopped at the May twenty fifth meeting with consideration for adoption on June eighth at six P M. And that was from the minute that you just approved on May eleventh.
Yep. Well, I, I got some con- concerns about the, uh, wording in that ordinance. And, uh, one of them is, uh, it seems to me that we're, we're giving up all, all of the power of an elected supervisor to a township manager, to hire and fire, and the only obligation is to notify the township board. Whoop, I'm going out again. Within seven days, and, uh, uh, no, I, I don't, I don't agree with that at all. And, uh, I don't even know if it's legal, to tell you the truth. So, maybe I'm.
Brian, this is, this is Ron speaking, and those were some of my notes I had in the margin for policy decisions. Now, again, these are not legal decisions, they are policy decisions.
Right.
And should, should policy be that the township manager, who is not an elected official, has the right to hire, fire, suspend, spend money, uh, without board of supervisors' approval? That's a policy call. Uh, obviously, uh, some township manager ordinances, for example, like upper Mount Bethel, they say that they cannot, the township manager can't do that. The township manager can recommend, uh, hiring, they can recommend firing, they can even discipline by way of warnings or things like that. But, when it comes to firing someone or hiring someone or suspending them and making them lose money, board of supervisors there feel that if, those decisions need to be made by the elected officials and not an appointed official. So, uh, again, it's just a, a different matter of policy. So, however this board wants to act, it can so act. Well, our, our policy up till now, which fairly well, uh, is that the board does have a, uh, the ability to approve, and, uh, since this has been used mainly with, uh, the road crew of, um, Roadmaster bringing in candidates, which, of course, if he wants somebody, we're not gonna disapprove them, but it's.
Mostly, right, yeah. But I still think that as elected officials, we should have a little bit more to say than just being notified.
I agree, Brian. Uh, to me, um, this is a working relationship. Uh, if, if the, the board and the township manager are getting along well and everything is fine, there's no problem. It's.
Uh.
Protect, and if, if it isn't that way, and we don't know what's gonna happen five or ten years from now, but, you know, it's, it's, it's kind of having those checks and balances for a future time when maybe, um, there, there isn't the, the, the kind of good working relationship that we have now. So, I'm kind of agreeing with you. Yeah, and looking at this.
Yeah.
Clearly are no checks and balances. Looking at this, and the powers and duties, the manager has authority to issue all disciplinary actions, responsible for hiring, has the authority to terminate all positions. The only thing they have to do is to sell supervisors, like, guess what I did?
Seven, yeah, they have seven days to do it. No, I think that's too much.
Policy issue, but Supervisor Levenham brings up a good point about checks and balances. And again, if everyone is working together and working hard together and working in unison, it works great. But if you get some rogue township manager that wants to start wreaking havoc, this, this ordinance, the way it written, allows that person to do that.
One person, and it's one person, not three.
Fair enough. So, I, I, I have, if, if we can make that change, I have no problem with the rest of the ordinance. I think that we're kidding ourselves if we think that, you know, elected supervisors have to make every decision in, in, in the day to day. I think that, that the rest of this ordinance is entirely based on other local ordinances written for Stroud, for Toby Hannah, for others in, in Monroe County, North Hampton County.
I think you should give the, the, again, as a legal matter, not, uh, the township manager should have some ability to spend money, to say that they can spend up to whatever you wanna do, twenty five hundred dollars a month, without having to come to you for every little thing. That they should have the ability to do.
Discretionary.
And even in the employee cell, make a, you know, discipline by way of giving, uh, a warning in their file.
I think it's suspension is fair.
Or a warning notice or whatever. Just firing, hiring, or costing employee money, suspension without pay, that really should be an elected official's position, from what I'm hearing, and I think that's a good check and balance. But, yes.
With all due respect, I think that's a policy call that you're making on your behalf. I think that, I think that it's fair to, uh, have checks and balances on that. I think it makes sense, uh, to perhaps, you know, make sure that the board has the, the hiring and firing capability. But I think that, um, you know, suspension of, you know, five working days is not unreasonable, uh, given, you know, i- if someone is hired to be township manager, presumably they're competent enough to be able to make those decisions and not let, you know, politics get in the way of that. I think the rest of it, I, I would have no issue with. But if we wanna change it to reflect that, that sounds fine.
I think Jacob has an interesting point. So, what we're really talking about is the larger checks and balances here, and, um, not the day to day. And, uh, I don't know how we word this, but I think so much of it just depends on good working relationship and trust. And I'll point out.
Why the positions at will?
I'll point out that before I was in this township, apparently there was an e- uh, an era of, of great friction. Then it was between the supervisors, but probably the rules of how we proceed, uh, weren't in the, in favor of the township then, when there was, um, um, a lot of dissent. And that could come again with the township manager, with supervisor, but, um, I just think the checks and balances kind of prepare us for that in another era beyond, I don't know what'll happen.
Well, my point again is that we're three elected individuals, and, uh, I would hate like hell to see everything being made by a township or, or township manager, all decisions. This doesn't, it doesn't make sense. We got, just as we sit here and make decisions tonight, we, we've got to, uh, we've got some accountability to, to the residents of this community. All three of us do. We are elected, we're not appointed or hired. So, I, I would be careful as, as to how far I'd go with that.
I, I agree with you, Brian, but I, I think Jacob's made a very good point that as far as the day to day, uh.
Oh, yeah, it, yeah, right.
What that is, if everyone reads the section, that's, that's what that is. I think if we change the hiring and the, the, the disciplinary, uh, point, I think that's fair. And I think we can get a new draft with that by the end of the day tomorrow, and we'll be ready to advertise for, let's say, the second meeting in June. It sounds like the first part of June is gonna be really brutal.
Well, that, that, that's to be considered, Mr. Chair. I mean, obviously, assuming we can get a revised ordinance done within, let's say, even by Friday, okay, where we now have the holiday in between, we have to advertise, uh, no less than seven days before the meeting date, and I believe the meeting date is the sixth. So, I just don't know how, even if we get an ordinance done, like, immediately, we make that deadline.
Right.
Plus, all the other things that are on our plate for that. The other thing, Ron, is I, I'd love personally to have, um, your input here, just based on other townships and so forth, and what you think. Well, yeah, I, I did look at this, I did make some notes. Frankly, I didn't have a chance to let you know what I think here. But, again, this is, you know, hard work, the job description is very thorough. Again, good, good work, and it makes my job easier, makes it go quicker, and there's not as much money being spent on, on, when that happens. So, here, here.
Yeah. Well, let's, let's have this advertised, then, with that change, for our, uh, second meeting in June, which I believe is the twenty second. I'd like to see that for then. And Ron, if you would have this.
I'm gonna write that down, because guaranteed I'll, you know, I'll be in Cincinnati or something.
Cincinnati. (laughing).
Twenty two, and if it's six P M., we're gonna do that, right?
Yeah, yeah, and.
It's only midnight in my time.
Right.
(laughing).
I'll make it quick. And, uh, if you could have a, a draft contract ready to go to, cause I would like to get this process done in, in, in earnest, you know, by then. We have to figure out, if you, anything you could provide to us.
No problem.
In terms of preparing the bonding process, because that's the most important, uh.
Contact the bonding agent, but we'll deal with that.
Okay. All right. Sounds like a plan. Next is discussing the draft personnel manual. Julia sent this to us a couple of times in the last few weeks. I don't know if anyone's had the chance to read it. Uh, I certainly have, I think she's done a tremendous job.
I agree.
Um, I would think that by June eighth, we can have a, an up or down vote on, on that, a personnel manual. I think Julia should be commended for all of that work, especially because there's a lot that has changed in the realm of H R, uh, since two thousand and ten or so, when the last one was updated.
Uh, well, a- absolutely, uh, but it would be, uh, untruthful me to say that I did not have a lot of help. Uh, I leaned on a lot of townships that provided so much work through this, um, of their own. Um, as far as the draft goes, um, I highly recommend that we, i- if the board is okay with everything that they have seen and looked through, um, Robert, I know you had some comments about looking at driving records and some other things. Um, I would like to stress that while I have pulled from other township personnel manuals and heavily from pizza as well, um, this has not been reviewed by an attorney yet. Um, and it would be my, uh, high recommendation that we either send this to Ron or Attorney Heimbach for their review to make sure that we are in compliance with everything that we need to be in compliance with. Uh, I did make sure, a- as the board has reviewed it, uh, we've got F M L A in there.
Right.
Sexual harassment, we've gone through, we've got an episode of laws now, uh, but there are, it's sixty some odd pages of things. And having a second and third and fourth and fifth set of eyes on this, uh, is always a big thing.
I would say Tom would be the one to look at. Board should be aware that the area of employment is probably the most regulated area of the law in the nation. That's how complicated and how involved it gets. I've written personnel manuals, I've done that before. I think Tom, who may be a little bit more up to speed with some things, should be, you know, should review it. And, and I could give it a quick review if.
I know, I think that would be great.
He wants me to, but, uh, you know, Mr. Heimbach, obviously, as the laboral expert, probably should, would have a little bit more to weigh in on than the draft.
I mean, these are, this is an area of law that touches, you know, both, uh, solicitorship, so I think it would be prudent for you both to, to take a look. Maybe, I'm sure his will be more comprehensive, but that's to be expected, given that's his particular specialty. But I think since ultimately the board's gonna enforce it, I think you're gonna be great to have your thoughts on it, too, Ron.
That's, again, that's not a problem.
Anyone have any problem with that? If we target for June eighth review by, uh.
I have not, I have not seen it, uh, or received it, uh, and I really, really would love to see it before I make any comments.
Um, and I sent it to you on May fourth of twenty twenty two.
Yeah, I didn't get it. I ne- again, my machine, I think, uh, Jacob actually gave me a tip to, uh, Lois, maybe, uh, to get some messages, but I'm really, it's so screwed up. I, I, uh, maybe it's a good time to, can I have Sundance come up here, spend about a half an hour at the most, and get me where I'm solid again?
Yes, no worries.
All right, I'd, Jacob, I'll take you. (laughing) Don't worry. All right, thank you.
I will, I will talk to them.
Okay.
I'll get in touch with them, so they can get in touch with you to schedule an appropriate time for you.
Okay, great. Thank you.
I will, I'll send the personnel manual to you again, so it's at the top of your list. Um, i- if you'd like, we can get you a hard copy.
Good, well, uh, whatever, but I, I don't wanna hold it up, but I do, uh, again, I, I spent a lot of time on the manual itself with Vicky Mavis. Do you remember Vicky Mavis? Uh, we got none of you were around. Uh, she's a professional. Uh, we had none of you were around. Uh, she's a professional, and she originally, uh, put that together, our manual. How about the union? We're gonna make a problem with the, with the union and differentiating the, uh, the two, uh, agreements?
Um, so the way that that would work is that the C B A, when the C B A comes into effect, would control. Um, so if we have something that says, states, uh, for example, that someone gets X amount of vacation time, but the C B A states something else, the C B A will control. Uh, and I do have that in the manual, take a look at it. Um, but that is another thing that the attorneys will absolutely need to look at, uh-
Yep, and, and holidays. Take a look at, at the holidays, too, Julia.
Absolutely.
All right.
Right.
Good work. Yeah.
Excellent. Next, we can talk about the consideration of the release of the performance bond for Pennsylvania American Water Company. I know, Ron, you were taking a look at that.
Yeah, I had looked, looked at the papers, that Julia was good enough to prepare, and as always, it was excellent. So, as far as I'm concerned, uh, assuming that the work has been done and has been approved and meets the township's approval, and I'm not sure if that's John or if it's the Water Authority or whomever is supposed to do that, as far as I'm concerned, you can release the bonds, unless John has a different spin on it.
No, I'll agree with you, except that no one has authorized me to look at it. I'm not sure I am the right person to move this case.
Uh, this is the ones that, uh, Arzoni, Ken Wolf, and our Road Master, uh, Ed McCormick took a look at. It's on one of our roads, and the water company did the work and then repaved the entire road. Um, after speaking to both Ken and Ed, uh, they said that, uh, in the past, the township has given, uh, verbal or written approval on they're okay, and decided normally never went before the board or the engineer to be released. Uh, but they've both said in the past, they were the ones to take a look at it. Um, the road's been paved over for, I guess, ten years now, um, and they've said that everything is okay, and the road is beautiful, and we can give them back their money.
Is that Independence Road?
Uh, Linda Street.
Yeah, it, it, I believe it's Lyndon Street.
Linda Street, yeah.
Linda, excuse me.
So, we need a motion?
Yes, a motion would be in order.
And I'll make a motion to release the performance bond.
Do I hear it? Do I hear a second? All second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I'll, I'll second that motion. I'm sorry, I broke up again. Am I late? Jacob?
Just, just, just by a second, but, uh, you're, you're here in time to vote on, on the release of the bond.
Okay, a- and I vote that we do then. Yep, okay.
Excellent. Perfect. Thank you. Uh, next is discussing, uh, spotted lanternfly research. This is actually something really interesting that I forwarded, uh, on to everyone just the other day. I was contacted by a professor from, uh, Cornell, uh, which is actually really fascinating. They want to, um, do a research project for spotted lanternflies at Menaceink Park. Um, they wanna enter through the Delaware Water Gap portion, and I've communicated, uh, with them, so they know. So, we're going to wait for their next meeting for them to give approval. But in the meantime, if they need to access from our side, I think it'd be terrific. So, what they would like to do is have two to three people visit the site on a weekly or bimonthly basis from early June to early November to observe spotted lanternfly stages and populations, and it would include collecting fruited spotted lanternfly to rear at their quarantine facility in Ithaca, New York, and also collect dead spotted lanternfly to observe in the lab in case a pathologic fungus produces fruiting structures. So, uh, they also say collections of early instar, which are baby spotted lanternflies, would be performed from small handheld vacuums, and adults are collected by hand. They have permits from Pennsylvania and the United States Department of Agriculture, uh, for collecting and transporting spotted lanternfly for their other research. They performed other similar studies at Glen Run Nature Preserve just a few miles from us.
That's really good news, Jacob. I just wanna say that maybe now, it's, it's gotta be at least six, seven, eight years ago, we invited them into our place, and they sent someone, and they gave a presentation, and we said we'd be more than happy to work with you. So, that's good news, that they've come around. Good. We got, lived through all of that place on it, you know, that.
We don't.
Yeah, we do. Our road crew, we, our road crew, we give it to our road crew, they throw it away. We give it to them again. Uh, but yeah, yeah, that's good. Okay.
Perfect. All right. So, I move that we approve the spotted lanternfly research project for the Smithfield Township portion of the park, and, uh, advise Delaware Water Gap Borough Council of all approval, and, uh, request that they do the same for their side of the park.
And I'll second that.
Second by Mr. Barrett. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Fantastic. Next is the consideration of the, uh, so-
Sorry, uh, Mr. Chairman, who seconded that motion?
Oh, Brian, good. Thank you. Um, next is the consideration for the authorization of the advertisements for two thousand twenty-two material bid notice, which is done every year. Uh, do I hear a motion on that?
Make a motion.
I'll make a mo- I'll second a motion.
Either way.
Um, all right, so I'm gonna go with, uh- Mr. Barrett made the motion, Mr. Lovinheim seconded the motion. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, next is the consideration for the award of bid for the River Road paving project that we authorized just a couple of weeks ago. We received one bid from H and K Group that came in at just under our budget, which was two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. This came in at two hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars and, I don't know, a couple of cents.
How long is the project to do?
About a mile. Was it one point one mile? Yeah, it's a big project, and we tried to do it two years in a row, but this time we, we received bids, so we would expect that it would go off without a hitch.
Very, uh, bad road, because usually it's about a, it used to be about a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars a mile.
Yeah, prices have increased quite a bit on, on, on construction.
Oil thirty percent up on the asphalt.
Wow, yeah, that'll do it.
That'll be interesting bec- with all the stuff that's going on. A lot of congestion.
For sure.
A lot of congestion in our area.
Yeah.
So, are we willing to accept a bid?
Yeah.
Or I'll make a motion to accept it.
Robert made a motion, I'll, I'll second that motion.
My Mr. Lovinheim seconded by Mr. Barrett. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Next is the consideration of the approval of the Eagle Scout project at Waterfront Park that was presented by Mr. Devon Witty and his father, Mr. Chris Witty of, uh, uh, Troop Eighty-Three. Um, I'd like to move that we approve said project and sponsor it, uh, up to two hundred and fifty dollars with receipt.
I'll, I'll, I'll make that motion.
Aye, motion by Mr. Barrett and seconded by Mr. Lovinheim. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Notify the Witties.
I'd like to bring up one more, um, item that's on here, let's call it O, but, uh, it's this bench that I put in front of you. Um, there's a, um, resident who wants to buy a bench that we would then place in Minnising, I'm sorry, in Mount Nevo Park, uh, which I guess we've done before, because the two benches that are up there all have dedications, uh, blacks on it. So, it's really no expense to us, except, um, the road crew putting it in. The question I have is whether, if we're buying it, we want to buy two, uh, one for us, because we could replace that terribly decrepit, uh, uh, concrete bench that's near the parking lot as you come in.
Well, I actually received a, a question from someone that I've been conversing with, uh, over email for the last couple of weeks, also about getting a bench at the pond by Mount Nevo in memoriam of, of a two family members.
I, I don't know what this is for. This is Grace Rodriguez, but I don't know who, who that is for or anything.
Okay, 'cause I, 'cause I talked to someone that, that was interested in the same thing, and Chris also sent me this, but I, I didn't bring it up at the time, or, I think we had some other issue that, that, that came before us that day, but I think it would make sense to more or less have a standard bench that we could approve for if people want to donate a bench.
Well, this is very similar to the, the two benches that are already up there around the lake. Um, the only difference I can see is there's another support in the middle. So, and these are six-foot benches, those might be five, but, uh, it's the nearest thing you could find. And also, uh, Chris, Chris turned me on to this company. The prices are pretty reasonable. Most benches I've found are around eight hundred dollars, usually around five hundred dollars. But it can, I'm the only one, there, there's really no cost to us, except for following it. Maybe the one you're talking about, same thing, um-
Yeah, for Mount Nevo, correct?
Yeah. And the other thing is whether we should just buy another bench while we're doing it, so we can replace it when it's falling apart, that we should come into the park.
Well, I know Ed just fixed one literally yesterday, so I'm not sure if that, if it's that one or if it was another.
That's the only one he could fix there.
Oh, I'll have to go up and look, 'cause I know that he did just go and fix it, 'cause he also just installed the, the trash can for, uh, that grant that we received from one percent for nature.
All right, well, let's take a look, but, um, I think the only to these people, if they're true or they're one, we're not sure. But as the site says, because of supply problems, it could take a while for these-
Yeah, I, I mean, I would have no issue with that. Uh, we'll have to compare notes to see if it, if it's the same family, 'cause-
Grace Rodriguez.
I know I have that one from Grace. I spoke to someone named Debbie Grocer.
No, I guess it's another bench.
Okay.
But we can use two benches.
Well, yeah, I, I think, I think it would make sense to.
Just, we're just buying them and being reimbursed.
Okay.
Again, when you spend township money, you should have a motion, but the state, in fact, not spending any money, in fact, then probably don't need that unless for, again, your audit purposes or accounting purposes.
Well, I would think it would probably be best to-
They're looking for something like-
To have one, and, and perhaps then just something that can be signed and enforced that, so, you know, you, you agree to reimburse the township, you know, uh, the real cost of, of, of the item. Fortunately, we're not gonna pay sales taxes where it's valid.
Well, we can make a motion to approve based on, uh, a letter from who want to reimburse, that they will in fact reimburse something like that.
That condition upon reimbursement, that they approve the expenditure condition upon reimbursement, confirmation of reimbursement from either the sponsor or whoever is the person.
That sounds great.
Okay, that said, I'd like to-
You get the big bucks here, 'cause you can figure this stuff out.
Nice. Well, a motion would, it, it would be appropriate then to have a motion to amend the agenda to add, uh, item O, consider, uh, approve purchase of benches, uh, by sponsors for Mount Nevo, uh, in our municipal park.
Oh, yeah, the motion, yeah. Robert made the motion, didn't he?
Yes, he just, yep, just did. Motion by Mr. Lovinheim. Do I hear a second?
Yes, you do.
Second by Mr. Barrett. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, I would now, uh, ask, uh, is there a motion to approve, uh, the agenda item itself now?
Uh, which, just for my clarification and for the sake of the mi- of the minute, is Ron, to reiterate what you said, to approve purchasing the benches additionally upon receipt?
On condition of receipt, of confirmation, written confirmation from sponsor, that the cost would be reimbursed, nothing to that effect. Um, or the sponsor, it should say patron or whatever, but, yeah, just green colored benches, just so we won't forget.
Okay. We can remember that.
Just in green Rock Island benches, for the record, and the six-foot version, not the four, the eight, the six-foot Rock Island benches.
Potato.
Okay, uh, six-foot, okay.
Yeah.
Uh, this, this for much, six-foot green Rock Island benches from Belton Outdoors.
I have to figure out, find out, Ron, whether he wants to do that or things or something. There's, they're same price, but this is how they put them in.
The Taffy, okay.
Okay, I will, I will speak with, uh, the Road Master to find out what version he wants, whether it be in-ground or the surface mount.
Fair enough. Okay. Uh, that said, uh, I'll move that we approve the underlying question. Do I hear a second? Seconded by Mr. Lovinheim. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Excellent. Anything else from the Board of Supervisors before we proceed to bills and public comments? Right on. We'll proceed on bills. I personally, uh, reviewed these. The grant total is forty-eight thousand, six hundred and fifty-nine dollars and eighty-six cents. Includes, uh, engineering bills, accounting, um, insurance, uh, as well as, uh, you know, parks maintenance and, uh, equipment for the road crew, uh, advertising for, uh, various positions, as well as, uh, materials for the road crew, including, uh, from Marshall's Prequary and other truck equipment. Do I hear a motion that we pay the bills?
Motion to pay the bills.
I'll second a motion.
Listen by Mr. Lovinheim, seconded by Mr. Barrett. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Boom. Do we have any public comments from, uh, these, uh, no, uh, resident guests? Are there any comments from anyone on Zoom? Martha, I see you're on with us.
No comments.
Thank you for coming. We appreciate it. All right, that said, um, before we, uh, adjourn the meeting, I'd like to, uh, recess into executive session, uh, which we can do. Uh, actually, you know what? You don't actually have to do that as part of the meeting. We can do that. We'll, we'll do an executive session just briefly to hear what Ron has to say about his contact from the auditorium attorney. So, we'll do that after the meeting. So, Brian, make sure you stay on the line. It'll probably, probably be only a couple of minutes, right, Ron?
Yeah, it won't be very long at all.
Okay.
Okay, yep, I'll be here. Thank you.
Perfect. Next, do I hear a motion that we adjourn?
Adjourn.
Motion by Mr. Lovinheim, all second. All in favor?
Aye.
We adjourned at eight eighteen P M. Thank you, the members of the public, for joining us.